All right, and this one will go to Hugh Morgan. As it pertains to county employees, what is your stance on providing abortion services part of the county health plan? Those services are provided through to state employees, why not to Deschutes County employees?
Yeah, currently they're not provided to Deschutes County employees because the county's health plan is self-funded and administered here, and it pre-existed the Oregon Reproductive Health Equity Act. And so it's basically been grandfathered in. It doesn't have to hold to those same standards as you know what state employees get. And that's because of, you know, county policy, I guess, but last October, you know, Commissioner Adair voted to keep that grandfathered position in place and continue to only offer coverage to county employees for abortion in the event, you know, of rape, incest, and the life of the mother being in jeopardy. So that's why we have it that way. I am not in support of that. And that's one of the things I'll address, you know, as close to day one as possible, is making sure that county employees have complete access to the healthcare that they need and that they decide that they need. Abortion is healthcare, and I don't think the county as an employer should have a say in how people handle their personal health choices. I am committed to protecting everyone's fundamental right to make decisions about their own bodies. And I believe that abortion should be safe, legal, and you know, hopefully as rare as we can make them as we address the other causes for why people seek that. But yeah, it should also be available to our county employees on their terms, not on the commission's terms.
Patty, same question to you.
Thank you for this question. I do believe that it is called, "The county is grandfathered in," and it is in compliance per our legal for, you can have it for rape, incest, or the health of the mother. And as someone who was married to a physician, I'm sure if you had health issues that your doctor could write up that that's what you needed to do. But that's how it's been grandfathered in. It is public money. And I received a lot of emails from people on, of course, both sides of the issue. But some people did say, you know, using public dollars for abortion, they were not in favor of that. So that's just repeating that line. So I would say, you know, it's definitely, it's an issue out there in today's world. But Oregon has been on the forefront of abortion, I believe, from like 1969, and all the different laws and changes. So where the county came in, they've been self-insured for, I believe, since 2000. That's how they set it up when I got there, or how it happened when I got in office. And so I just maintain what had already existed. But I would love to use this minute, and just in case we run out of time, is to say something about Warrell Park, on the fact that-
Can we stay on topic for this question?
Patty, we'll-
Oh, I just don't want to lose time.
No, at the end, we'll give you an opportunity. Yeah, we want to make sure that you have an opportunity to say anything that's important to you. At the end, we'll give you a chance to talk about your important issues.
Can I, real quick, Nicole? I'll be fast. I don't think this is, just because this is the way it's always been done, is a good reason to continue anything on its own. And I, I'm really disappointed in this decision. It's, it's not enough to meet just a legal bare minimum when the majority of the Deschutes County residents support women's right to choose, people's rights to choose. And I see that as being really out of step with Central Oregon values. I think for the commissioners to serve as, as the public health authority, and for a commissioner to be on that, on that, to have that level of power and be anti-choice does not serve our community. And with me, you'll get a pro-choice commissioner.
Thank you for the clarification. Want to move on quickly. I hope this is a quick one because it's easy, easy to suss out. But let's see, county employees, including the Deschutes County clerk, are responsible for administering and certifying elections. How confident are you in the safety and integrity of the county's elections? And that's for you, Patty.
Well, thank you so much. Steve Dennison and I, the county clerk, attended county college together. I have the utmost faith and trust in Steve's work. He's an incredible professional. He took over for Nancy Blankenship, who retired after 19 years. She was an outstanding county employee, just outstanding. I couldn't say enough wonderful things about Nancy. But Steve has really stepped into that role, and I feel like we, as Deschutes County residents, are in excellent hands.
Great, thank you for that. Morgan, repeat?
I agree. I agree on that, on that front. I think we have an incredible county clerk, and he runs his office really well. We have a history of that in Deschutes County. I have the utmost confidence as well. And I have confidence overall in the, in the free and fair elections that our country holds. I'm also disappointed that my opponent, you know, during the 2020 election, put forth all kinds of ideas on her, on her Twitter feed about how the election was stolen, and seemed to ascribe to the notion that we don't have free and fair elections. So I'm pleased to hear that in Deschutes County at least. Commissioner Adair sees, sees our system being, being really wonderful. But I would love to see that expanded to the whole picture of democracy in America.
Any rebuttal for that, Patty?
Well, I just wanted to let you know that when you sign someone else's ballot, it will be caught. Because I know someone in Deschutes County who signed for her son once, and she actually, they caught that signature. So please, don't sign anyone else's ballot. It's, it's a felony, I believe, isn't it? Yeah, you're not supposed to sign anyone else's ballot. So just remember, yeah, we are so lucky. We are in America. We are in a democracy, and we, it's important to exercise our right to voting, as someone who got their degree originally in history.
Thank you. Jack, you ready for the next question? Nope, you muted.
Sorry about that. And this one goes to Morgan. Housing continues to be a major issue for Central Oregon. What can the county do to support the construction of more housing and supportive housing for those experiencing homelessness within the bounds of current state law?
So both housing and homelessness. They run along a whole continuum, right? So we need, we need all levels of housing really desperately. Housing's a top-line priority for me, no matter what corner of the county I'm in. People are talking about how difficult it is for many, many folks either, you know, to stay here, or to move here, to live here. This is an amazing, stunning place to live and work. But if we're not taking care of the people that make it amazing and contribute to our communities by, by having affordable and workforce housing available, then, then we're missing the mark. I have, I have all kinds of ideas. I think the county can really step forward in being a more proactive partner to our cities to help develop a little bit more infill. I'm not picturing, you know, skyscrapers or anything like that. But if we can increase density a little bit, you know, it's, you don't have to be a CPA to know that, you know, on a, on a quarter acre lot, if you put one home, the cost of that land is going to be a lot more for that one household versus if you can build, you know, a triplex or a group of cottages on that lot, then that, that cost goes down and makes housing more affordable. So support for our cities. I would love to see a more robust look at what county land resources can be contributed along that whole continuum. So for, you know, transitional housing, for unhoused community, for permanent supportive housing, for affordable housing, and for workforce housing, how can the county leverage their, their land resources on behalf of that? I would love to look into, you know, more incentives for long-term rentals and deed restrictions to sort of make sure that our housing stock stays in line with what people are actually able to make living here. I'm, I'm also really interested in other ways we can expedite permitting for, for workforce housing out in the county. And I don't, Jack, are you going to ask about houselessness later? Because I can go into more of that, but I-
No, we only have two questions left.
Okay, okay. And that goes, you know, the same for our unhoused community. I'm really excited about the Joint Office on Homelessness. The new executive director that we hired is great and really, you know, ascribes to, just like I do, some data-driven and, you know, really proven methods for responding to our unhoused community so that we're not just putting Band-Aids on the problem. We're not just shuffling people around, but we're actually creating long-term options for people that are dignified. This not only makes our whole community safer, but it's also economically, it makes sense because we know that, you know, the more people have to spend their time either in jail or in the hospital, it's much more expensive for taxpayers to, to have people spending their time there than, than simply to shelter them in some way.
And Patty, same question. Do you let me know if you need me to repeat it?
I believe you were talking about housing, and Morgan just used over three minutes. So I wanted to be sure that I have an adequate amount of time. Thank you, Jack. Okay, I would say-
A lot of big topic. We'll give you three minutes for it.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I want to say that inflation is impacting what is being built right now in Deschutes County. Things have slowed down with the interest rates going near 7%, the highest in 15 years. I've heard from the mortgage people. I've heard from builders, people aren't buying. I mean, this is in Lapine that are the most economical houses of Deschutes County. Things are really, it's really horrifying to me because I know that we are short of housing. We have a growth factor. And yes, it's, it's, it's awful. But this is what I have done, dropping into the legislature for this next January with Senator Knob's office. I have a project that's 57 acres with over 300 single wide manufactured homes on it, single wide. Someone had come back to me and said, "Why aren't you doing double wide?" And I go, "We want to have it affordable housing." I mean, you go anywhere in the community, and people don't have enough people working for them. They don't have housing. So I am extremely excited about this manufactured home project. It's, they can be up to 900 square feet, and it's an amazing opportunity between Bend and Redmond. So that's something that I've done currently, and I'm incredibly proud of it. I also, as part of the commission, asked that we give two acres in each of the quadrants in South County for Habitat. That program is amazing. Families get to participate in those homes. They get reeducated on how to actually make your mortgage, pay your bills, and children graduate from high school when they have the continuity of living in one home. So the Habitat program has been an enormous benefit. I believe in Habitat and also CORE, CORE, the land that the Simpson property, that CORE, and the apartment buildings, I believe it's Housing Works, they're doing apartment buildings. But K O R is doing 35 cottages in, in Bend, 35 cottages. It's, it's a wonderful project. They do an outstanding job. Really proud of Jackie and all the projects that she's put together. So been working a lot on more housing, but affordable housing. You know, we've, we've got the, we've got the houses that are worth a lot. But how do we make it so when you, you work in Deschutes County, you can live in Deschutes County? That's been on the top of my radar since I was elected. And right now, I'm also working with county property to do a bunkhouse for veterans, veterans in Lapine. I feel that this is such an opportunity. We have so many veterans that live South County. And if we could do a bunkhouse for them with a commercial kitchen downstairs, it's actually allowed per Lapine city permitting. So that's, that's something that I'm extremely proud of, and I want to get that in motion sooner rather than later. I've actually been trying to find a way to house those homeless veterans this winter. Now, you realize that the Veterans Village in Bend has already had six gentlemen graduate from that program. I was the only commissioner originally that voted to put half baths in each of their cabins. I raise boys. Every, every cabin should have its own half bath. And six veterans have graduated. The program will be a year November 15th, and I feel that that's so remarkable. And I'm hoping that more affordable housing projects will actually expand to having, we need to give people dignity, compassion and dignity. And, you know, Veterans Village is such an amazing project. So I'm, I'm really proud of all those things.
Patty, I just want to clarify. I'm curious about the thing you mentioned with Senator Knob, the 57 acres. Is that a proposal that'll be coming up in the legislature this session?
Yes, it's for the long session. It really wouldn't fit in short session. And it is 57 acres, and the plans are for over 300 single wides. I just really feel it's a pilot project. It hasn't happened in decades. But you know me, I always try and think, out of the box, what can I do? And what can I do for people that work in Bend? There's a lot of things we can do for like, you know, lower end. But people that work need help too. So it's, it's really exciting. I'm, yeah, Senator Knob's office has team with me on that.
Just want to make sure-
I think it's important, sorry, Nicole.
Go ahead.
I think it's important, important to note, you know, you're not going to come across a candidate that says, you know, "I don't care about housing, housing for our workforce or affordable housing." But the way in which we pursue housing from here really matters. So there's sort of one approach that I think we've had, which is sort of haphazard in the way that we handle our land use decisions in the county. And there's another way that is much more intentional, strategic. So, you know, for me, when I hear 57 acres out in the county, and the reason that would have to go, you know, through the legislature is because it would be an exception to our land use rules, I'm picturing a lot of rural residential sprawl, which is not necessarily what's in the best interest for the whole Deschutes County community. I think there's ways to get that kind of housing and that kind of quantity of affordable housing and density by working within the land use system to protect our open spaces, advocate for our farmers and ranchers, and, and keep this place, the beautiful resource that we've all come to know and love, by respecting those land use rules and encouraging, you know, population centers within, within urban growth boundaries.
It actually happens to be our R10 property, and it's almost on the Bend city line. So it's really not urban sprawl, and it's something that hasn't been done. It's something I've been told that the city of Bend really wouldn't want to do. But we recognize that it is workforce housing. It's, it's an amazing option. The people that are putting the program together are considering even selling some of the, the homes if people want to buy them. They, they are really proud of this project. They've owned the land for quite a while, and it's right on, right on the line. So I feel like-
Interested to see how that plays out. I want to get in, I have one more meaty question for you, and then we kind of have a couple fun ones, I hope, before we wrap up. I want to respect your time, and I know it's Friday. Maybe you're doing something fun after this. So the, the last kind of meaty question, and this is going to go to Patty first, what steps can the county take to preserve groundwater in the region?
Okay, the first step we need to do is we need to remove as many juniper as possible. Not only are the juniper trees highly, highly flammable, they actually suck up 30 to 50 gallons a day. And if you go back, Nicole, and look at a picture of Deschutes County, maybe 80 years ago, you're going to see very, very, very few juniper trees. I know right now, the county has a grant from the BLM for private property owners that are next to BLM land. It's a grant up to, it's offering 250,000 total. So homeowners or property owners can apply for that grant through Nathan Garabee at this moment. But to remove junipers, it's amazing. You should have probably only four junipers per acre, which I think is important. And then the other thing, I actually found out that there was a pellet plant in Prineville that was making pellets out of juniper trees. And you've seen what's happening in Europe. Now, unfortunately, the gentleman that was running that plant had a motorcycle accident. And I've got to check with his family and see if anyone in the community of Prineville is going to continue that. But we could be making pellets, and we could be shipping them all over Europe. Because right now, their energy situation is really rather, it's incredibly fragile. And I recognize that. And I'm, I'm a recycler. And so if we could turn those junipers into pellets, what a difference it would make. Apparently, they do create a little more problem. And then as far as other water uses go, I, we've got to be respectful. You see that piping, there's always the good thing about piping. We've done a lot of piping. I appreciate the fact that COID, the Senior Water Rights of the county, they're now down to 27% flood irrigating, which is not as effective as sprinkler systems. And so it's good. That's dropping. It was up in the 30s a year or two ago. So that's actually dropping. And that use, and we need to help and get more water to where it needs to go, such as North Unit, where the food is grown, where, you know, people raise semi, semi-loads of carrots and garlic and all those other really good things. I mean, we're talking North Unit, you know, they're the, they're the junior right, and we, you know, COID has a senior. So if we could get their flood irrigation down, I believe that they are on track to do that. But it's, it's a challenging time. And I do feel like the junipers, it's just like the stabilization center.
All right, thanks, Patty. We're getting, we're getting tight on time here. So I'm going to move to Morgan on this question.
Yeah, thank you. I know water's top of mind for, for so many people from all walks of life. We're in, we're in a season of drought, but I, you know, I think lots of us fear that with the reality of climate change, it's less of an exception and possibly more of an ongoing reality. You know, farmers are being denied the, the full amount of water they need to grow what they're growing. Wells are going, going dry or running low. And, and we're facing, you know, servicing groundwater depletion because of that decreased snowpack as a result of climate change, and, and pumping out groundwater at, at a really unsustainable rate. So I always joke with people, you know, even though it's called the Deschutes River Basin, that doesn't mean that the Deschutes County Commission has full, you know, autonomy and control over what happens with that resource. Water's really complicated, and there are a lot of people at the table that I know have been working for a long time to address these challenges, and continue to work together to figure out what we can do in the future to mitigate our, our water crisis. I'm a big fan of the Deschutes Basin Water Collaborative, and, and sort of these bigger picture things. I think, you know, certainly there's, there's some truth to the, to the juniper situation. But in the grand scheme of things, it misses the big picture that, you know, the more we can pipe sections of Leaky Canal and allow more water to go to our farmers and ranchers or stay in the river, the more we can seek funding or look for funding sources for that irrigation modernization. As Patty said, you know, a lot of people are still flood irrigating their, their fields, and that's really, really inefficient. So the more we can help farmers transition to more efficient forms of irrigation, we'll see so much water savings on that front. And then really, you know, going to the state to help develop, develop more tools and ask for more flexibility around our water law. I know the Western Water Law is, is codified in so many ways, and sort of this behemoth that has been around a long time. But if we can ask for more flexibility from the state when it comes to water leasing, where, you know, people with water rights can, can lease that water back to the river or to farmers downstream without having to meet these sort of strange conditions, I think that would be great. I think we need to look at what beneficial use looks like as a state. Because with the use it or lose it water right situation, I think a lot of that water is getting, getting wasted when it could be better shared. And we can make sure that, you know, the river and our wildlife have enough water, our residences have enough water in our cities, and, and that our farms and ranches have enough to get through the, through the year. And the Sisters Irrigation District has been doing, you know, is a, is a huge success story about this. I won't go into it because we're trying to keep it short. But they're seeing incredible success having their canal piped. It's working out really well for, you know, in, in the majority of ways.
Thank you, Morgan.
Speaking of the minority ways, the unintended consequence, when you do all this piping, there was just a huge write-up in the bulletin over irrigation equipment that was actually plugged because of the silt in the piping. So, you know, there's always like two sides to the story. When you pipe everything, where do the deer get drinks? A lot of people, by me, took out their ponds. So where are the wildlife getting their, you know, their drinking water? It's, it's incredibly complicated. And I would hope that the state legislature this long session would address some of the issues. We really need that to happen in Oregon.
Thanks. All right. Jack, you got another one for us, right?
Yep. And this is one of our last two. It's our kind of fun section. So, and we'll start with-
What journalists call fun.
And imagine.
Morgan, can you say something you appreciate about your opponent in this race?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I admire anyone who steps up to serve their community. Just being in the midst of this campaign process, this is not for the faint of heart, and really reveals, you know, a level of commitment and, and aspiration that, that is admirable. Certainly, serving isn't easy. And there are a lot of special interests that try and work you and, and pull you to ascribe to a certain tribe or to a certain party line. That's really powerful. So, you know, stepping up certainly, you know, isn't enough. We have to have, you know, a baseline of values that align with our community. But I really admire Commissioner Adair for stepping up to serve the community and having a reputation for being, you know, very responsive when, when people reach out.
And Patty, same quote.
Okay, Jack, thank you so much. I actually appreciate that, that winter, when it was so cold, Morgan stepped up and put the church, the First Presbyterian Church, into a winter shelter. And she did that so graciously. And it was full of people. And I actually went and served food one night there. And I, I got some kind of spray from the hardware store in Sisters for, to help with, you know, disinfectant and everything. But I so admire that she stepped up because it's, it's never easy, you know, a lot of times, jobs are not exactly the easiest thing in the world to do. But it was a lot of coordination. There were a lot of people moving people. And I remember seeing people coming in when it was so cold. And that's why I so worry this winter coming up. If we have a cold winter, it's seven times more deadly than summer. And that's why, you know, I'm worried about the veterans in Lapine, and what can I do to get them out of the cold this winter? We've, you know, more warming shelters, for sure.
Well, you can see why that's a fun question for us. We like, you know, it's, it's nice to, for people who, you know, are on opposing sides, I guess, to have to come together for a minute. And so last question before we give you a chance to talk about anything we didn't bring up. Tell us, Patty, where someone would find you on a Friday night?
Find me on a Friday night? Well, it depends what Friday night it was. Usually, I feed my, my, I check my horses at like eight or nine o'clock before I go to bed. So sometimes I might be out cleaning some stalls, or giving them kisses on their nose. But yeah, a lot of times consistently, you will find me in my barn at eight or nine at night, just checking to make sure that everybody is okay. I, you know, it's part of my being is, I was shocked today that my cat didn't come in the office and go across the screen. Because normally, that's what they do. Yeah, like, come on, Coco, where are you? So, yes, no, it's, that's, that's one thing I could say consistently. I would be in my barn at some time on a Friday night.
Thank you. Morgan, where are we going to find you on a Friday?
Oh, man, I'm trying to think, pre-campaign.
Yeah, not campaign season.
My, you know, my, my, one of my favorite things in the world to do that just brings me such great joy is that I actually, I love lion dancing and west coast swing dancing. So there's a couple places around town, you know, when music is happening, that, that's, that's just one of my favorite things to do. If there's not music going on, then you can probably find me in the alley at San Simone, enjoying like an excellent old fashioned.
Nice. All right. We are going to start with Morgan, just to wrap up. Anything we didn't bring up, please try to keep it to two minutes, because it's our Friday, and a beer guy just arrived to bring us some of the stores. So.
Sounds good, sounds good. Yeah, what else to say in wrapping up? I am, I'm obviously running as a Democratic candidate for the seat. I'm really honored to have the Independent Party's endorsement as well. And really proud of what I've done already in the community to, to bring collaboration to some of our most challenging problems. I think this is a serious job with serious implications. And we need serious solutions that, that are rooted in evidence and the, the expertise that we have such, so much of in our county. That's been my one, my one campaign promise throughout all this is that, you know, with the scope of what the county handles, there are going to be moments where I don't know the answer. But I will know who to call because we have such incredible people in the, in these communities, ready to step in and serve. I am really animated around the importance of leadership that is focused on getting things done, rather than getting caught up in, in party politics or in extreme ideology. And, and I hope to bring that energy to the county commission, where I will, I will work with anyone who's, who's ready to seriously tackle the problems facing our communities. Yeah, I want to take your full two minutes, Nicole. Thank you.
All right. Patty, anything we didn't discuss or just, you know, closing statement?
I do want to acknowledge that I testified for three years on the ADU Bill 391, which unfortunately was married to that forestry bill, Senate Bill 762, which has shut this entire project down. Those account for almost 10,000 accessory dwelling units in rural Deschutes with residences already on the property, at least two acres. That's so sad. And I've asked, actually- Already on the property, at least two acres. That's so sad and I've asked, actually asked for people if we can get a divorce between three ninety-one and seven sixty-two. Because we need that housing. It's unbelievable. I was so worried when they put those two together. We already know that we need to build a hardy product that is not going to be flammable in Deschutes County. And we need the housing. So yes, seven sixty-two, it's got to be separated in order to make that difference. And then I want to acknowledge that I did triple fire-free the second year I was in. Everyone loves to save money. You can go to the transfer station or not landfill with your um lawn clippings, with your pine needles. With your pine cones, everything. And I just thought it's, it's really important to have personal responsibility. That's been an incredibly successful program and it's actually tripled the amount of tonnage that people come in to um, to clean up their property. But, and the last thing, and most importantly, I want to thank the source for your letter, your support of saving Royal Park. I was the only commissioner that voted to save it. I voted to save it. I don't know, it seemed like, seemed like decades ago. I even did a YouTube video to save Royal Park. It's seventy-five thousand years old. If we touch it at all, it'll be gone. It was named after a wonderful gentleman in our community. It's been there for twenty-five years and we received over seventy emails from the public. Phone calls, emails, and these high schoolers that were in on Wednesday and testified in person have over three hundred. Petition set signatures on the docket. So I really thank Royal, I thank you guys for all you did for Royal Park. I really. It's a very special place. It's, it's an acre. It would take, you know, to really tear it down. It was going to take over three thousand dump trucks. It just seems so inappropriate. There's leaning ponderosa pines on it. I love the park and I think it brings such a vision to Ben. That we don't take everything out. We actually respect nature. So thank you, Source, for doing that article. I know I called.
Actually, Mr. Jim Anderson, who unfortunately passed away last week. So that was one of the last uh things was to advocate for Royal Park.
Um, yes, I know. And, you know, thank you, Mr. Anderson. I'm sorry, I can't tell him in person, but. The response in the county has been unbelievable. So I, I really thank you and I'm just hoping that, you know, there's, there's still hope.
Yeah. Um, well, we just want to thank both of you, Morgan and Patty, um, for your time today and um just for your service. We always are in admiration of everyone who um steps up to the plate to talk about important issues in our community and try to make our community better. Um, so, you know, regardless of the outcome, we, you know, we salute you for what you've been doing for, for our community.